Hello and good evening. It is six o'clock on November tenth, two thousand and twenty, day before Veterans Day. Want to welcome everyone who is on as an attendee showing it to our city council meeting. Sorry, we had to go virtual. The numbers are skyrocketing as everybody's been listening to in the news. And it's for us just better to be safe than sorry. And we're getting a lot of different communications from all over the place in the county and the state. Just thought it's probably best to go virtual for this meeting and possibly the next and see where November takes us. But that's where we are tonight. So again, apology for having to do this, but at the same time, we're just trying to keep everybody safe and and healthy and as we go forward. So with that, I will call our meeting to order for our city council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Huffman, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Ottega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Member Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present virtually.
All right, thank you. As we get moving, I wanted to, before we get started, some of you may have heard, we've had some bad luck as far as some bad news that have hit our community. One of our local and resident, I won't say historians, people who's just been here for a long time has always been involved, Ms. Florence Paradise. She passed away just a little over a week ago. And I think, and I'm not, I may be mistaken, but maybe Tamara could help me. I think it had to do with complications of COVID. And I know she, you know, a lot of us knew her in many different capacities as, you know, Coach Johnson's mom and would always be in, or mother-in-law would always be in the stands watching and cheering at football games to help in our historical society. She's been on the chamber, just so many different roles and responsibilities that she's taken on throughout the years here in our, our little community and, and just someone that a lot of us looked up to and just really appreciated her presence in a lot of different ways. And just someone who's obviously going to be surely missed and, and, you know, one of those unfortunate things. And she is someone I've known all my life. Our families have known each other for a very long time. And actually, her sister was my third grade teacher. And so luckily, we were able to honor her recently as well as the chamber recognized her as one of our parade marshals. I think a year or two ago. So just someone who's going to be very missed. And I wanted to take a quick moment of silence for someone who's, who's given so much to her community. So if you indulge me a few seconds here. Okay, thank you. And, and again, if her families are listening or, or they hear this later on, just know that the city and myself and and the city council, we just sent along our deepest sympathies and, and prayers and thoughts and, and I hope you can make it through this difficult time as, as best you can. And, and we're all here to support you however you need that. So with that, we will keep going onto our regular agenda. We do have a lot of items tonight. We do have some items that are kind of combined. So I think we'll probably combine a discussion in the one bit, and then we will do some separate motions and things like that as that comes. So Ms. Yolanda, I'll go ahead and let you take this part here. To those of you who are attendees, you know how to communicate with the council during this time. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So for those who need a little extra instructions on using the GoToWebinar, you should see four buttons. And if that's all you see, all you need to do is just click the little orange and white arrow, and that will open up the full user interface for you. During the council meeting, your attendees' microphone will be muted. There are two ways to communicate with the city council. The first one is to raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. Or you can type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. So raising your hand, you click on the hand button on your vertical attendee bar, you will see a hand with a green arrow going up. And when you, when your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red, and you see the arrow going down. A member of the staff will call on you by name, the name that you registered with, and will unmute you to ask your question. Then if you want to ask a question in the question pane, you can just start by typing your question to the city council or staff members in the box. Staff will read the question out loud and direct the, direct your question to the appropriate party. If you cannot see the quest, the question pane, just click on that little orange box with the white arrow in it to open up the full interface. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And then we will go ahead and keep moving forward. We, under item four A and B, we have no presentations tonight. We do have appointment of some members to our new youth advisory committee, and it has Ms. Duncan as the speaker tonight. So I'll let you take that, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. On April the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the city council created a Fountain Youth Council to create a link between our local government and the youth in the community. The stated purpose of the Fountain Youth Council is to develop and foster a self-directed group of youth leaders with the time and energy and passion for change, who are educated and informed of the functioning of the local government, and that represent and advocates for youth throughout the community. We have advertised and received the attached applicants to serve on the board. The applicants have been received and reviewed and recommendations are to approve the following to the Fountain Youth Council. Jason Martinez, Antonio Martinez, Dalen Duncan, Vanessa Wilkerson, Vivian Korea. I hope I said those names right. So the proposed motions will be needed to appoint each member to the Fountain Youth Council. So I moved to appoint. And if you, I don't know, are they able to come on where we can see them? Sylvia?
It would really just depend if they, if they have a camera that's functioning. I'm not, I'm, I'm assuming the link will let them get online. But we'll just have to see on their end if they can pull their camera up.
Okay, so Jason, if you're able to open up your camera, would you do so at this time? Are you able to speak through your mic, Jason? So I don't know how to, I don't know how to talk to them other than through here.
I'm sorry, what was Jason's last name?
Martinez.
Okay, let me look. Okay, it doesn't have a mic on for him, so. They may not. And I have a question.
Can they raise their hands? Can they do it that way?
I got one response from Jason. It just says yes. So Jason, if you could turn your mic on, go ahead and try it. Because he's not blocked on our end, so he should be able to. Right, I'm not seeing where. Okay, yeah, and our end, it's for Jason, it's not showing a mic at all. So I can't even unmute you on our end because there's nothing there for you. So. And that looks a lot of the way it looks like for a lot of the kiddos, Ms. Duncan. So I see we have a lot of people here, and a lot of the names you mentioned are here online. So an, an option is if, if you have a question for them, they could type it into the chat box if they can't turn on their mic.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
So this is to the youth council, Jason, Antonio, Dalen, Vanessa, and Vivian. If you're unable to mute your mic or your camera, then please type in, in the chat box. If you, if you know how to do that. So it says I have to do separate motions for each member. So I moved to appoint Jason Martinez to serve a term as a member of the Fountain Youth Council. The second motion, I move, do I, do we have to do one at a time, or can we motion?
Hold on. I'm wondering if we, Ms. Sylvia, can you, I think we can just do one motion for everybody, I would assume.
Yes, you can do one motion for everybody. My assumption is that the youth council does or does not have terms. I'm sorry, Ms. Duncan. Do they have terms or no?
They do two-year terms.
Okay. So you just make a motion to appoint all of the applicants to a two-year term. And you can do that in one motion. You don't have to do each name individually.
Okay, can you repeat that? I'm reading Shirley Martinez. It says, she says it's muted by council.
Yeah, there's, there's not, so on my end, there's a little red mic if it's muted, and there's no mic even highlighted on her name here. So like, some people have the mic and others don't. And if, so for Dalen, for example, he doesn't have a mic either. The way they logged in. It could be the link that they're using, to be honest with you. And I don't know on that piece, so. But on this one, we, you know, we could simply, if you'd like, you can have just the motion and for everybody, and then we can just appoint them that way. And I, I'm assuming you'll have them, they're going to be working on some tasks and things that, you know, if we can get back into another meeting inside, they can all come and, and be a part of that meeting, and we can be more formally introduced. Or the other option is at the next meeting, which is in a week, well, we've got a lot on that agenda because of our budget. Or we could even move it to the first weekend, December, where we could figure out a better link for them to log in, so they can have access to their, their microphone and their camera. And we can have a, maybe even agenda item where we are introduced to them that way, if you'd like. So there's a few different options we have.
Okay, so we, what we'll do is because the kids did pick the best day that was for them. And this was, they did a survey, and this was the best day. So we could, we can do the motion to have them as the youth council and then formally introduce them when we're able to. The Gazette is on the line, so they were wanting to capture this moment also.
Okay, yeah. And unfortunately, like I said, I can't, normally if someone is muted, I can unmute them here, but there's not even an icon for me to to touch to unmute them. So I don't, it may be because on their names as well, it says web next to them. And so everybody else who is logged in is on something that doesn't say web. So some of our regulars who usually get in, they don't have web on theirs. And so I'm wondering if it has to do with the web link rather than registering for the council meeting through this.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion to approve the following, Jason Martinez, Antonio Martinez, Dalen Duncan, Vanessa Wilkerson, and Vivian Korea. And I'm, I'm sure I'm chopping her name up, to serve on the Fountain Youth Council.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tem?
I would like to second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and second to approve this, the young adults to our new youth advisory council. If no further discussion, Ms. Huffman, would you go through the call?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, and that's, that's great. And I'm excited about this. And, and to all the people who, who are putting more of your time into this, all the kids, you know, this is a kind of a big deal. We used to have this a long time ago, and it really puttered out. And so we're really looking to you to be able to really kind of revitalize this organization for us, the, the youth council and, and really kind of give a voice to your counterparts in schools and, and across the community. And, and just being able to, you know, see what government looks like as well. And so we're really excited that Ms. Duncan came on and, and really wanted to involve as many people as possible. And this is one of those things. And so I do encourage you all to, you know, keep in touch with the council and, and anytime you need help with a project or anything that you have going on, please don't hesitate to reach out. And, and I know Ms. Duncan will keep you guys busy. And we're looking forward to see all the good things you guys do over the next year or two. And so again, Ms. Duncan, if you need to, we can definitely fix that, so we can get everyone introduced as well in a more formal way and move from there.
I really appreciate it because they were all dressed up and everything. So we'll do it again next time.
Yeah, we definitely.
We're going to make it up to you. So I appreciate their sending me photos of how nice they look and handsome they look. So we'll do it again. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that they are formally, and, you know, COVID has changed things for us. And sorry about tonight, and, but we'll make it up to them. They, they look very handsome, and the girls look very pretty. So we'll, we'll do it again.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm excited about it. So again, I, I think I know a few of the kiddos just from around town, and I'm excited to see that they're here. And they're going to, you know, give back to the community. And this is where it starts. So thank you for doing that. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number five, our city council agenda requests and/or announcements. And I will just go down my list here. You know, I have it written down, so I don't have to forget anybody. So I'm going to go off of memory a little bit. So I'll go with Ms. Duncan, anything more for tonight?
Just one more thing, since it's fresh on us with the youth council. They are doing a sock and hat fundraiser, and we will have boxes placed at City Hall and Fountain PD and the customer service at the utility office. So we're asking the community to help us raise sock and hats for those that are in need this coming winter. So if you would please do that. Again, the boxes will be at Fountain City Hall, Fountain PD, and the customer service utility office for donations.
All right. And is that going to be also like announced on our website and in the paper?
Yes, Lexi is helping us a lot. She's getting the boxes made up. We're getting a flyer to put out, so we'll, we'll have that out very soon.
Okay, great. All right, our next council member is Mr. Geek.
Yeah, I've got a few, just a short message here about the the press conference that took place today with the El Paso County Board of Health and the building that the county has purchased in the shopping center down there where the Beckett Center used to be. And I would just like to say, I am really, really happy about how this came together. I can't tell you there. I'm going to miss somebody, I'm sure. But I would like to thank the Fountain staff, mayor, the council, El Paso County Board of Health, the county commissioner. It just was amazing to see this come together so quickly and to have something like this down there in our area that's been needed for so long. I just can't tell you how happy I'm about it. And I really do appreciate the fact that the council is, could come together here and helped us get this done. And that's pretty much all I got to say. But I really, transportation, you know, that's going to be, been taken care of, or it's being taken care of as we speak. There are just a lot of things that came together here real quickly because it had to get done in a pretty short time. And they did open today, or yesterday, moved the testing center to that facility from Spire Station One. And they were going, there was lines, lines of people there today. So rather than have to drive all over, drive to the north into town, you can come right down there to that facility, and they will take care of you. And one of the things that was mentioned today was the fact that if you want to get through it quickly, you, you can go online. Do your, your your authorization stuff through that. And then there's a, they'll set you a time where you can come in and get tested. Or you can go sit down there and wait, fill out the paperwork while you're in line. Just wanted to bring that up. And that's all I have. And I really appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
Okay, and just on that, I, I happen to see the, the press conference this evening, right before our council meeting. They had it on one of the news sites. I don't remember which one. And again, I think the one person you didn't forget, but I think he really needs to be singled out because of just everything that went into it. And I don't, a lot of people just really aren't going to understand the amount of work, the amount of wheeling and dealing, and the amount of totting that he had to do for this thing to make it work. And that is our deputy city manager, Todd Evans. And he was working with both the owners, the county, and just working at many different avenues as he could to really make this thing happen and, and get them to meet in the middle. Because it, as, as you know, anytime you're going to be working with an owner of something and someone who wants to buy, and, and of course, you have government involved in all these things that are going on to get it moved as quickly and as amicably as he did, was a feat in itself. And so in the middle of a COVID year, an election year, and everything else going on for him to really pull this off, and, and, you know, for everybody. And, and I think he's probably the unsung hero of this whole thing to, to make this actually work. So Todd, I know you're listening, and I know you're not going to take credit at all for this. But if it wasn't for you, I don't know that we'd be here. You still have a lot of politicians arguing about, you know, what color the stripes going to be in the parking lot. So I'm really thankful and appreciative that you were, you took this head on and, you know, and, and really made it, made it happen and made it work for everybody. So again, I, I, from, you know, the bottom of my heart, and I, I'm going to speak for everybody, but just thank you for all that you did on making that possible for us.
One other thing, one other thing, can I mention, Gabe, that Dr. Terbys did mention him today. And he's the president of the El Paso County Board of Health and did mention the fact that probably this would not have happened if it hadn't have been for Todd and Scott. So I want to make sure those guys both got recognition too. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to miss it.
No, no, you didn't. And again, I, you know, it's, and he's not one that's going to take the credit right off the bat like that either. But I want to make sure that people understood that, that what he did in the middle of all that to make it work. And so again, if it wasn't for him, I don't think we'd be at the point we are today. So thanks for that. Anything else, Mr. Geek?
No, that's fine. I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Applegate?
I got nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes?
I get my mic turned on. Couple things. I also want to extend a big thank you to council member Geek for doing his part in getting the health department office down here. I know Scott and Todd did wonders. But Sam was in on that too. And so he needs to be recognized for his role. And to County Commissioner Lon Hinoz Gonzalez. A big congratulations and appreciation for your service to all of our veterans tomorrow as we celebrate Veterans Day. And a couple of things on Florence Paradise. She was one of the founding members of the Fountain Valley Historical Society. She was a member of the Chamber of Commerce and the downtown Old Town Steering Committee. She was just so active in this community. And I, she's going to be dearly missed in our community. And I was lucky enough to have her sister as my third grade teacher also. And it's just been a big part of this community, and it's just a sad loss. Big one is we're having the ribbon cutting this week for the Fountain Mesa Park ADA accessible playground. So be aware of that and know that that will be happening on Thursday at one. So I'm really super excited about that. So, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Not entirely sure who to pass this on to, but I got about a hundred people this weekend that came up and talked to me about the road being open on Link at Squirrel Creek and how much, and just how smooth that entire drive is. I'm looking forward to, really looking forward to the whole rest of everything as it continues to, to unfold up there. And much, much, much appreciation for everybody involved getting the the health department facility down here. Can't tell you how much my family and I appreciate that with my in-laws especially. Being able to take advantage of that facility that's literally about two minutes away from their house. So I know that is a big win for an awful lot of, an awful lot of folks around the area. And just can't thank you guys enough for making that happen. I really appreciate that. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Trunk or treat? I'm sorry, new name, Fright Night, was absolutely fantastic. Everybody that helped, and I know that was a big burden on the staff this year. The event was unbelievable attendance. People were waiting in their cars for a very long time. And, and I don't think we heard anything cranky from anybody. They were just so appreciative of having that activity for their kids to do. Something as a family that they could do on a beautiful evening. And so I'd just like to thank all the staff and everybody and all the businesses that helped with that. Thursday, this Thursday at eleven AM in the oh, I want to, I, hang on, I lost the place where the Fountain Library used to be years ago. Gabe, what's the building?
Walt Fortman.
Walt Fortman, thank you. The Walt Fortman Building. Karen Chair is having what they call a mobile food pantry beginning at eleven AM. Look for an announcement from it hopefully tomorrow, but it will be a drive-through situation. We have some community volunteers that have stepped forward at the last minute to help with that. What Karen Chair did for their mobile food pantry is they actually bought an old beverage truck where you can just roll up the sides, and the sides will roll up, and there will be food there to be distributed. So everything for free. So please come through. And I think all they ask for is, is, you know, your zip code, so they can kind of track where people are coming from. So that's Thursday, eleven AM at, at the, at that building. And then I went to a DOLA meeting today. That's a governor's DOLA meeting to do with COVID nineteen. And the lady from CDPH, Mara, was talking. And about thirty-eight hundred new cases just today in the state of Colorado. And they're really encouraging everyone to stay home as much as you can, so that in three weeks, maybe we can have our holidays and get togethers. There's a website, I don't know if a lot of people are familiar with it. If you just Google Colorado COVID dial, like a phone dial, it has a chart, then you bring, you drop down to your county, and it actually shows you the color code your county is on. They keep calling it orange, where you don't want to be in orange and, and yellow. And if you look at it, maybe I just have weird eyes, but to me, it's more like light peach and dark peach. So right now, we're in what they call yellow, which looks peach on their map. And we don't want to get to that orange zone. So that's the way that citizens can kind of keep track of where the different areas are as far as COVID. And once again, Sam, I'd like to offer my thank you to you for being on that health department committee. And for all the hard work that you and that committee did to get that down in our community. It is much needed. And kind of shocking, we haven't had something down like that before. So thank you again for working so hard on that. And also went to a Habitat call today about housing during the COVID crisis and the veterans. And really, really fascinating. really, really fascinating to see what different people are doing to, uh, with that issue around the area. So we do have a couple of Habitat builds that are going on in the area. You may have seen they're getting ready to start one over on Race Street. They're actually on the last house on the community that they've been building up on the Bird Streets. And I can't believe they're that far along to be on the very last house. So that's, uh, fantastic to see that community be built and all those people into those homes that they're, they're buying with, uh, homeownership. So, you know, a lot of stuff going on in our community. Uh, we just keep pushing forward through all this. COVID's an inconvenience, but as you can see, we got a Health Department, we got a Youth Council, we got houses being built. So a lot of great things continue to, um, keep going forward in Fountain.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only thing I have, I wanted to add on to, uh, the, um, discussion with Mr. Geek around the COVID testing. Uh, so unfortunately, I had to go get tested, uh, two weeks ago, almost two weeks ago Friday, uh, this coming up Friday, and I went to the Fountain Department, Fire Department, uh, um, site. I went at 4:30 in the afternoon on Friday and I got onto the El Paso County website. Um, and on there it had, uh, the link to register before I went in. And so I quickly registered, uh, just put my information at the, that I, the bare minimum. Uh, they asked for social security number. I didn't put mine in and it never came up again. Um, so if you don't wanna put your social security number, don't do it. I didn't, and it worked fine. Um, and so I literally filled it out online. I think I did it on my phone, got in my car, drove over, and they already had the information in. And so all they had to do was type up their little, um, sticker that they put it off, the little sample thing, jammed the thing up my nose. Um, this was Friday again at 4:30. By that Sunday, by 11 o'clock, my results came in the email and, and it was negative. So, um, I was just deemed a close contact. So, um, that's how quick it is. And again, if you pre-register, um, and I, you know, I live three minutes away from Fire Station One, and so it went really pretty quick. And so, um, if you do end up going to get tested, I would encourage you to, to pre-register, get onto the uh, county's website and it'll have that information as to, um, who you register with. Um, and it was literally that fast. I got there within three minutes and all my stuff was already in and they just, uh, they rolled down the window, they shoved the thing in your nose and, and you're done until your, your results came back. And again, it was as quick as, uh, it was less than two days because we got it early Sunday morning. So, um, just for your all information to kinda further that message. Um, and again, it did move up to, uh, the former Beckett Event Center, the new El Paso County, um, building. So, uh, just so everyone's aware. Um, so with that, we will keep moving. Uh, I have public to be heard. Item number six, six, citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you email your questions to the clerk prior to the meeting, uh, at councilmeetings@fountaincolorado.org. Council may not be able to provide a meeting answer, but direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you leave your comments to three minutes or less. I'm gonna look to Ms. Huffman and see if we did get any, um, things, any emails. Okay, and I'm not seeing anybody's lights on from the public. And I think we are good. I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna keep moving forward. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. What would council like to do with these items? Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, and Ms. Estes?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Uh, Ms., uh, Mayor Pro Tem, did you have anything?
No, I was just gonna second if, if.
Okay, sounds good. We do have a motion and second. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll move on to item eight, old business. Eight A is second reading of ordinance number 1750 and ordinance to amend the Fountain Municipal Code Section 250 of Chapter 12.04 of Title 12 Construction Generally to amend the minimum street grades and intersection grades of uh, two from, uh, zero point five percent to one point zero percent. That reads a little weird. Uh, Ms. Williams, are you on or is Todd gonna take this?
Yeah, Mayor, I can go ahead and take this.
Okay.
But as you can see, uh, there has been no changes from this, uh, from the first reading. Um, this is just a change so that we can get that, uh, stormwater and the drainage that she spoke about. So it's a small change, uh, to the grading and the sections of the grade, uh, for our curb and gutter and streets, but no changes from first reading.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Williams, I see your name here, but kinda the same problem we ran into with the, uh, youth council, you have no mic on your, there's no mic icon for you. Um, so I don't know, uh, where that is, but as long as Todd hit it for you, um, we will go forward with that. So I will, um, look to council for a motion on second reading. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I move to approve ordinance number 1750 on second reading.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second for approval. Uh, Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All righty, moving along. Item nine, new business. Uh, we didn't take anything off the consent agenda, so move right into nine B. Um, I'm open to a public hearing to consider the request for beer and wine liquor license application for Arashi Sushi Hibachi and Grill LLC located at 8035 Fountain Mesa Road, Suite 130. Ms. Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, Arashi Sushi Hibachi and Grill has submitted their application for this beer and wine liquor license. Uh, the local and state fees were submitted with their application and the results of the survey that was conducted by Liquor Pros um, and a map of the survey area and a list of the liquor establishments located within the city of Fountain have been submitted to council prior to this meeting. The Fountain Police Department has been notified of this application and they have no concerns at this time. Property was posted and published 10 days prior to this public hearing. I do believe that we have representatives on the line from Liquor Pro. We also have a representative, uh, from the restaurant itself. Ms. Jen Park is on the line representing, um, the business. And I believe Ms. Sylvie Semino. And there is another representative from Liquor Pro that's also on the line if you have any questions. Uh, but Mayor, as you said, I don't see a microphone from Ms. Semino. Um, and I don't know who the other representative is from Liquor Pros.
Okay, yeah, the only, um, I, I see the same, and the, the names that you mentioned, unless one of them can turn a mic on, I don't see a mic here that I can turn on or off for them. So, um, but if they, if, I mean, if council, if, let's check with the public. No, let me start over. Check with council. Do you have any initial questions? This is a public hearing. Um, does council have any questions on this one? Ms. Duncan, your mic's on. Do you have a question or?
Oh, no, turn it off.
Okay, that's okay. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any other council members on right now. Uh, I will look at the public and see if anybody has any questions from public. I'm going through and nobody is turning anything on. And again, if you're in the public and, and it's not working, there's, there is the chat function at the, at the bottom of the pane there. Um, and/or you can write a question and I can repeat it, um, uh, for the record as well, so.
Mayor and Council, I just wanna let you know that, um, Liquor Pros that typically conducts a lot of the surveys, um, for new liquor licenses in the city. Uh, I did wanna just make mention to you, my Deputy City Clerk Joni Orneal had put together kind of a quick comparison pre-COVID and the way those numbers look because it's kinda important to make sure that we're still, um, gauging the community and finding the needs and desires of the community. It looks like the numbers, um, pre-COVID versus during the pandemic, um, have gone down just slightly about nine percent. So I think that we are still getting, um, the, the numbers that, uh, the applicant is looking for in order to get this approved for them.
Okay. Um, and I, one of the applicants just sent me a thing. They said they have a mic, but it's, it's saying we're locking them out. Ms. Yolanda, do you see why, um, we're running into this issue?
Um, no, because we have not muted all of the participants. Let's see if I can, let me see if I can unmute people. No, I don't think it's on our end. Um, I'm seeing a lot of the participants who are, I think, using GoToMeeting through the web rather than downloading the application. And those people using the web all seem to be missing a microphone.
Add. Okay. All right, so with that, um, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. If council has anything more, um, as far as questions or concerns on this item, please let us know. All right, I'm not seeing anybody's mics turn on. Okay, um, it looks like we're okay. So, uh, if council's good with the motion or with a motion, please, uh, forward one. Okay. Yeah, now it says everybody's muted.
Yeah, hold on just a minute, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Duncan, I'm gonna try unmuting you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm unmuted. They said I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay, so for council right now, I'm gonna unmute you all. Um, you may have to mute yourself back. If that makes sense. Um, I don't know. Okay, so.
I'm finally unmuted too, you know, so.
Okay, so before we move on to a motion, since everyone was muted, if any council member has any questions or comments for this item, uh, ask that now. Okay, Ms. Estes, did you have a question or comment?
No.
Uh, Mr. Applegate, did you have one?
No.
Okay, so I will go ahead and take a motion. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I move to approve a beer and wine li- liquor license for our Arashi Sushi Hibachi and Grill LLC.
All right, uh, and Mayor Pro Tem?
Yep, please. I'm just gonna keep you on the line if you don't mind, cuz in case you need something.
Okay, Lisa, I can hear you.
Who is that?
Okay, um, okay, Mayor Pro Tem, did you second that? I didn't hear.
I was attempting to second, yes.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and second, and Ms. Huffman? I did unmute you a minute ago, hopefully. You're, okay, go ahead.
Me? Okay. Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, so let's, um, I heard Ms., uh, Lisa on, do we need, do you need a few seconds here? We could take a quick two-minute break? Or can we go ahead and keep moving forward?
Right now, I think we've got every I think we have everybody that needs audio speaking unless I, I'm incorrect. The only ones that I see that we could have an issue with are, uh, members of the public. And if they could raise their hand, if they're able to, then I can be able to work with them individually.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and keep moving. And then we'll just, we'll play it by ear, and I know you're kinda working on the background there to try to make sure everybody's good. All right, so we'll move right into item nine C. I'm open to a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1751 and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fountain from the planned unit development PUD district to the small office SO district for a portion of the property generally located on the southeast corner of Old Pueblo Road and Link Road, Fountain, Colorado. And here and after, more specifically described in Exhibits A and B. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Good evening. Chrissy Martinez of the City of Fountain Planning Department. The request tonight, again, is for a rezone of a portion of the property that is owned by the Fountain Sanitation District. Uh, next slide. Next slide. The property is located at the, uh, southeast corner of Link Road and Old Pueblo Road and is the current location of the Fountain Sanitation District Administration Building. Next slide. The district currently owns the entire corner, which is approximately 22 acres in size. They are also concurrently, uh, processing a subdivision flat to split the parcel from one lot into two. The proposed rezone tonight would be the, for the, uh, portion of the proposed Lot Two, which is the eastern 14 acres. Lot One will be retained by the Sanitation District for their administration building, and then they anticipate listing the future Lot Two for sale for future development. Next slide. The surrounding land uses to the north is the Fountain Four Carson School District, H Transportation Facility, and a zoned industrial. To the south is part of unincorporated El Paso County and has a zoning classification of it as an agricultural zone district. To the east is vacant land, and then to the west is single-family residential that is located within the city of Fountain and have a zoning classification of the large lot residential district. There's an existing access point onto Link Road that currently serves the Fountain Sanitation District Administration Building. It's anticipated at this time that both the Sanitation District's, um, Administration Building and this future lot will share that access point. However, in the future, should that access point need to be reconstructed at Link, they will coordinate that with the city engineer. The future Lot Two may also have secondary access to Jordan Road to the south. However, Jordan Road is within the jurisdiction of unincorporated El Paso County, and that future lot owner would need to work with the County Department of Transportation on any access if that were to be granted. Since those current lot is, um, not developed and there are no plans for development at this time, all of the stormwater runoff will continue to flow through their existing pattern. Next slide. This is the depiction that would show that future Lot Two showing the 14.7 acres. That is the area in question, or to be considered tonight for the, the rezone. The, uh, western Lot One and the seven and a half acres will still retain the existing zone district of the planned unit development. Next slide. The Fountain Comprehensive Development Future Land Use Plan does recommend The Fountain Comprehensive Development Future Land Use Plan does recommend single-family residential in this area. However, the rezone to the small office warehouse district is not consistent with this future land use plan. It does provide a cohesiveness with the surrounding land uses, especially to be north with the school district's transportation facility. Next slide. This item was presented to the planning commission at their October meeting, where they made a recommendation of approval by a vote of seven to zero. Staff finds that the rezone request is generally consistent with the review criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance and would recommend approval tonight of ordinance 1751 on first reading. Are there any questions for staff?
All right, I'm gonna look to council if you have any questions on this item. Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, I'll just move my phone.
Okay, that's all right. And I'm looking to see if any other, so we are in a public hearing, and knowing that, considering the issues we're having with our things here, I don't know.
We also have Jonathan Moore representing the Fountain Sanitation District in attendance. I'm not sure if his audio is working at this time or not, but if there are any questions for him as the applicant, we can direct those to him.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to council, I don't see anything up, no other public, and again, if your mic isn't working for whatever reason, you can definitely type in the chat box if you need to, or the question pane, and I could see that, and I will relay that. I extremely apologize for whatever the issue is tonight. I don't know why we're running into this issue. Mr. Moore has his hand on, but I don't, again, he has the same issue with everybody else, doesn't have a mic highlighted, if there's anything, oh, he says I can answer any questions. So he'll answer any questions as well, so. Okay, and again, I'm not seeing anything past that. I'm gonna go back to council, I'm gonna go ahead and close our public hearing, and if no further questions from council to staff, what would we like to do? Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1751 on first reading.
And Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this item. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Lost my pen. Good Lord. Okay, item number 9D. First reading of ordinance number 1752, an ordinance amending the following sections of Title 17 zoning. 17.04.170, 8.5.5, point, let me start, that went over, 8.5. F. V. PUD standard, 17.08.020 D, access approaches, driveways and curb cuts, permits and standards, 17.12.050 sign, sign measurement, 17.12.060 D, three freestanding pole signs, 17.12.060 East monument signage, 17.12.060, assuming that's an I wall sign, 17.13.030, temporary use table, 17.13.1, 17.18.020 E, chicken hens, and 17.31.010, meanings defined. Thank you for that, Ms. Martinez. You may take it from there.
Thank you. Kristy Martinez with the planning department again. Next slide. The, in January of 2020, city council had adopted a comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance. So since that time, staff has been utilizing the zoning ordinance, and as with any brand-new document, we had to work through some of those glitches and things that weren't quite working in application that sounded good in theory. And so that's the items that are being presented to you tonight. Overall, we found that the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance has worked out well for not only staff, but for the development community as well. However, we have identified a few areas that do, we feel, need to be amended in order to still move forward with the cohesiveness and the intent of the zoning ordinance. Next slide. The first item falls under Section 1704170 of the PUD design criteria. Staff is recommending tonight that we remove the statement that states that the use of different yet cohesive colors between buildings, including the primary building color, secondary color, and trim color. This goes back to the PUD design standards to ensure that each new single-family residence is distinctly different from each other. As we went through the draft versions of the zoning ordinance that the consultant had provided, this was a recommendation that they had made. However, staff had rejected that recommendation because paint colors can be changed fairly quickly and easily, and yet would not provide a distinctly different architectural enhancement to the home to make it different from an adjacent home. So tonight, staff's recommending that statement be removed from the design criteria. Next slide. The next item is 170820, which addresses access approaches, driveways, and curb cuts. This area of the code was silent in terms of curb cuts and driveways for residential areas. We are recommending that in residential areas, that only one access approach or curb cut is permitted unless the property is greater than a half acre in size, and that all secondary access approach or curb cut permits are still to be reviewed by the city engineer. This recommendation is coming forth between, by recommendations of the city engineer, the streets department, and the city inspectors. What they're finding is that a lot of secondary access approaches are being put in over the weekend or overnight. They are not following the proper protocols to obtain the necessary permits, so that the engineering department can review the access approach for safety standards, for drainage standards, and other specifications that are already outlined in other subsections of the municipal code. The permits are still required, but unfortunately, we're just not finding some of those that are being issued. So we want to make sure that each curb cut and approach is being properly evaluated by the engineering department to make sure that it is safely installed and will not cause damage to the city infrastructure. Next slide. This section, I kind of grouped all of the signs into one. One of the recommendations to the, from the consultant was to utilize a primary and secondary sign, and those allowances based on the facade area of the building. While that sounded great in theory, when it came to application, we found it really difficult to try to identify which was the primary facade side of the building and which one was the secondary side facade. It was also difficult for the development community and business community to understand what signs they were and were not allowed. So staff is making the recommendation that we remove the primary and secondary signage tables, and then we would then provide maximum size allowances for freestanding pole signs, which is .35 square feet per lineal foot of lot frontage, up to a maximum of 100 square feet for the freestanding signs. We would add a maximum of 50 square feet per non-residential monument sign. We're also suggesting to add additional entryway signage for residential subdivisions, that as these new larger residential subdivisions come to fruition in our community, they will have multiple access points, and therefore, we want to have those developments to be able to have the opportunity to advertise their neighborhood and community on their entryway planes. Related to wall signage, we are requesting that we add a maximum sign of one and a half square feet per lineal building frontage, except as provided in a subsection of the sign code, which deals with multi-tenant buildings, and that would be based on the suite size. Next slide. We're also recommending tonight that we add retail sales to the temporary use table. We're recommending a period of one week in all commercial and mixed-use zone districts. The retail sales component was not included as a temporary use, and we're finding more often that people are requesting temporary retail sales components. So if somebody wants to set up a small booth in another business's parking lot to sell their product, we didn't have the ability to do that under the current regulations. Staff had made a internal policy to allow it for the one week with a one-week extension, so we're trying to implement that policy and put that into the code to make that part of the rules and regulations. Next slide. And with chickens, I promise I made no major changes to chickens. I did not make any changes to numbers or allowances. With the new code, we had combined the requirements for the chicken coop and the chicken run into one subsection, which then made it very difficult to see which code allowances were for the coop and which ones were for the run. We are making the recommendation to separate the requirements for the chicken coop and then separate the requirements for the chicken run. The requirements for the chicken run would be very similar to that of the chicken coop, just identifying the location, the setbacks, the height, and where they can be located. We're also making the recommendation to expand the definition of a chicken run to an interior fenced area of confinement of chickens accessory to a chicken coop, and to add the definition of a chicken coop, because that was not included, which would be an accessory building that is enclosed with a solid top for the primary purpose of housing chickens. Next slide. These code recommendations were presented at the November 4th Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, the commission made a vote of six to one to recommend approval of the amendments, with the exception of Section 170820, which is the access approach and curb cuts. At tonight's meeting, staff is still making a recommendation of approval of ordinance 1752 on first reading with all of the code amendment changes to Title 17, and those are all listed on that slide, so you guys will not have to necessarily read all of those into the record again, I don't believe.
Oh, no, someone's gonna read that.
Someone will, because if you had to, Mr. Mayor. And so at this time, I'm going to pass it off to Deputy City Manager Todd Evans, since he oversees both the engineering and the streets department. He can go into more detail in terms of the concerns that some of the, those staff members are seeing in the field.
Thank you, Kristy, appreciate that. Mayor and council, appreciate the time. One of the reasons that I wanted to make sure that everyone understood kind of the intent of the secondary access issue is Kristy discussed that currently it involves engineering, our streets department, and our city inspector. Another department that affects as they go out and identify these, as they pop up throughout the city, with the vast, vast majority of them being unpermitted, is code enforcement. And then once code enforcement gets involved, and they go out and start dealing with the issues that these bring on, then it comes cycling back to engineering and all those other departments I mentioned again. So this is something that we really are trying, and we want to avoid this turning into, you know, the same situation that we had with carports. So what we did is, is I just had staff take a couple of pictures of some of the ones that give a good idea of what these can turn into. If we just allow them, especially in, as Kristy stated, in our high-density neighborhoods, it does create a burden, both with public safety, our infrastructure, as, the infrastructure that is shown up in your upper-left picture can show what occurs when these, and this is actually being used as a regular driveway, that someone just removed the panels from the fence itself. But the sidewalks and the curb and gutter were not designed to handle those type of weights. So it's not if the infrastructure is damaged, it will be damaged. And as you can see to the picture on the right, individuals are now kind of, oh, what's, I don't know how I term it, but they're, they're trying to control that as a secondary access point as well. As you can see, the sign that says do not park or block the drive. Well, it's not a permitted drive, and it's illegal drive, and those individuals don't have the right to tell others that they can't park on that public right-of-way as if it was their primary driveway. So as you can see on the left-hand side picture, Kristy mentioned that we have folks that are now just kind of going out and, and kind of altering our infrastructure and doing their own things so they can get these access points. So as you can see here, someone went in and just poured concrete so that they could drive over the curb and gutter and the sidewalk without damaging their vehicle. And as you can see in this, that, of course, affects the flow of the stormwater drains, it affects a lot of things negatively. So we've got multiple situations where infrastructure has to be taken into account. We have, we do have success stories where a few of these have been approved by the city engineer. But when she does that, her and Ben take a look at the overall size of the lots, if there is gonna be a negative impact on our infrastructure, if it allows a good flow, if there's any public safety issues. As you can see on the right, someone has created a secondary entry so that they could drive under a carport in their backyard. And when someone looks at that, they may think, well, there's no damage. Well, they've, they've added concrete on there, but as well, it is driving over a stormwater channel, per se, or quote, a small ditch, so we have damage there as well. So we have multiples of these in the city. Code enforcement deals with them as they become problematic. We do have complaints that come in. I personally get involved with multiple of these complaints, and if you could go to the next slide, Kristy. Some of them turn into, as we used to call it with my old hat on, Hatfield McCoy situations, because the neighbors, when they moved into these neighborhoods, they knew that secondary accesses and the storage of a lot of things people want to put in their backyards, the city does not allow. So as soon as this starts to occur, it builds and builds and builds to the point that then we have to get involved with these situations, which we don't like to. So these are just some other pictures of different type of secondary accesses, and again, all of these are supposed to be permitted, but very, very few are. We had Rosa go back and check Duane's records, and we can find very few. Brandy could only remember a couple that she has approved in the three to four years that she's been city engineer. So the vast majority of them are not permitted and create a public safety issue. I'm not sure, go to the next slide if we have one. One was actually put recently at the corner of Monterey. That would be on your lower-left picture. As you can see, that's at the intersection actually of Monterey and CNS, where it goes down onto Duckwood. And so this individual, as they are pulling in and out of that access point, they're actually packing or pulling out into a very busy intersection. So it's almost impossible for us as a staff to be able to say, if we allowed this, all of the dominoes that are going to fall in those neighborhoods. But it is something that is required to have a permit. People are not getting permits. Code enforcement has to go out and deal with them. And to be quite honest with you, realistically, from a logistics, logistical standpoint, our engineering department is nowhere close big enough to deal with all the things they have coming in, and then to go out and do summaries, and to do investigations, and to get involved with every one of these secondary access points. So this would be a burden both on the neighbors in these neighborhoods. This would be a burden on staff if we said that people could have these secondary access points. So that's why, from a staff recommendation point, we recommend that we go with what we have proposed, and we did try to be reasonable with that. That's why you see that half-acre lot size. So we have our neighborhoods like Little Ranches, the larger lots that we have out on the eastern part of the city, and those, we understand that's an entirely different situation than we see in our, in our smaller lots, 3,500 all the way up to 10,000 square feet, which in no way, shape, or form, when they were designed, were designed for a secondary access point. Something else, I just want to remind everyone, as we have these new projects coming in, if we say that this is allowable within the city, then of course, as those others come in, they would be allowable as well. So logistically, again, it would be, just to be honest with and frank with you, a nightmare to try to referee all of these situations in our neighborhoods. So I'm open for any questions from council or the community, specifically on this one item. And Mayor just confirming, you could hear me on that.
Yeah, I was, I was actually looking at the mics to see if anybody's mics turned on.
Okay.
And I don't have any. We did get a call, I'm assuming-
I had my mics on.
Okay, but I'm in the middle of the sentence. We did have- We did have resident Mr. Rick who did call. I'm assuming, when I say "we," he said he was gonna call all the council members so to talk about the reason why at planning, they did not, they weren't in favor of this item specifically around the curb, curb and gutters. I think the thinking there was that we could just find the resident who were to do the curb and gutter. So I just wanted to present that as the information from him on that end. And if anybody heard anything different from Mr. Rick, please speak up. Ms. Thompson?
I just want to verify, Kristi, you said you presented this to planning, but you also presented it to the HBA.
That's correct. All of the code amendments were presented at the October HBA meeting, and we also provided the signed code amendments to Kimberly Bailey, who oversees economic development and the Economic Development Committee for any of their feedbacks. We did not receive any feedback from either the HBA, and Ms. Bailey had made the recommendation that this did not need to go forward through the Economic Development Committee because it wasn't making any substantial changes to their allowances.
Okay, and on the one slide, I'm not sure which one, you'd have to go back. It showed where somebody had built a driveway basically next to their driveway. Kristi, can you explain to people what the difference is between how a sidewalk is built for a known driveway, you know, curb cut when the house is built, as opposed to when they just put one in and drive over a sidewalk?
Sure, I'm gonna speak my limited engineering speak here. But as neighborhoods are developed, the sidewalks in front of their primary access point onto the street are actually poured thicker than elsewhere throughout the community because they're anticipating more heavy vehicles driving repeatedly over that area. When curb cuts are expanded outside of that area, those sidewalks are not built to withstand that amount of repeated heavy vehicle traffic and therefore deteriorate quickly. And when those sidewalks deteriorate, they can then compromise the adjacent curb and gutter. And as the water gets into those cracks and crevices and through the free-saw cycles, it then expands and damages the gutter and then ultimately into the street pavement. The property owners are responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk. However, it falls to the city to maintain the curb gutter and the street portion. So when this occurs, we get phone calls from neighbors that say, "Oh, the curb and gutter in this area is broken." Well, when we go out to find out what's going on with it, we're seeing that there's some access issues that were not properly permitted.
Okay, so it's definitely a thicker measurement of the sidewalk over your driveway. So the photo that we have up there of a trailer that's gonna be driving over a sidewalk, that portion of the sidewalk is not made for that? The upper right-hand one, yeah, okay.
Can I make a comment here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for one thing too, that there's a different compound. If you're going to have a sidewalk that you're gonna be driving over, it may be the same thickness, but your amount of concrete or cement that's involved in that might be a different amount. You might be a regular sidewalk, you can probably pour a twenty-five-hundred or twenty-five-hundred stack mix where if you're gonna drive over it, you want thirty-five-hundred. And that's all part of the stuff that you get from the county and the city.
And I assume that makes it more expensive, so that's why you don't do the whole thing that way?
Yes.
Thank you. I think you, that's good to know. Okay. Well, you know, I know it's frustrating to people because, you know, they are trying to put different things in the backyard, but overall, it costs the city a lot of money. Kristi, what was the vote on this particular item at planning? This one section, I know you said the rest of the vote was six-one, but what was it on this one?
There was an entire, they didn't do a separate motion for each subsection. It was a comprehensive motion. And so the vote was a six to one to move forward with all of the recommendations of approval except for the curb cut section.
Okay, so they just withdrew that portion from the motion. Okay, I'm just making sure I understood what happened because I didn't get that impression earlier when I talked with Mr. Rick, but I may have just misunderstood it, so.
And you know, Ms. Thompson, you touched on it, and you and I, a couple of weeks ago, made a drive through the countryside area. And what we saw out there was a lot of the houses that parked their vehicles in front of their house. Many of those houses are also storing them in the back. And one of kind of those domino effects that we talked about this, we're focused so far on the damage. And when we have to go in and fix these, it's in the thousands of dollars, not the hundreds of dollars, that we all know that we don't have. But also, once folks start accessing that in the back so easily, typically what will happen is they start storing things in the back of the yards that they usually wouldn't be able to because they don't have the access. So you've got the large RVs, you've got the broken-down vehicles, you've got trailers, you've got boats, all of those things that weren't intended, again, to be in these high-density neighborhoods. So not only does it become a structural issue, that it's something that continues to be an issue on and on and on for our code enforcement and the others, the neighbors that live around these homes, that when they're in their second stories, they look down in those backyards. So it's something that really not only impacts our infrastructure as a city, which we're focused on, but it also does impact the quality of life of all those people that surround these lots where people attempt to do this.
Todd, since you're still on here, I assume that code enforcement would be reacting to these like we normally do, and somebody would have to call in with a complaint or a concern, right? We're not gonna be driving up and down streets looking for every single one of these that's an issue, right?
No, correct. We're not looking to go again back down the carport road. They deal with these as they're problematic, so they prioritize them. If it's a public safety issue, of course, they will react to those immediately. If it's an infrastructure problem where they're damaging the infrastructure, then those become a priority for them. I've dealt with multiples of them. We don't have it on here, but I was gonna show some success stories on here. I don't know if we have them in a further slide, but we've had individuals on CNS road. I think everybody remembers some of those areas where they had eighteen-wheeler trailers parked along CNS. So they dealt with them multiple times. I've dealt with them. We asked them to move and just need to lock their fences and to not utilize those as secondary accesses. And we can show you success stories where people have done exactly that. So we're not looking at being, you know, the hammer on these folks. It just, we can't allow it because of all the issues that we've talked about.
And this might be a Troy question, and I promise, Mayor, this is my last one. If we didn't deal with something like the one in the lower-left-hand corner and an accident were to occur when they were pulling out of that unpermitted, are, how deep can they go? I mean, can they say the city allowed it by ignoring it? And this way, at least, if we have some notice on the property that they need to fix it up, you know, you have to think legalities too.
Yeah, Sharon, I mean, that's certainly a good point, I think. And ultimately, we want to make the streets and the sidewalks the safest that we can. And I think we owe that to the community to do that. So, yeah, I think there's certainly, you know, it's not great if it's unsafe from a kind of a public safety, but from legal perspective as well. So I think that's something to consider.
Mr. Applegate, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Well, I was just gonna mention on the concrete earlier when they were talking, that a general rule, a driveway apron built as a driveway apron is six inches nominal thickness, whereas sidewalks only four inches nominal thickness. So you have a lot more there. And the only way they could expand it is to get an engineer to engineer the expanse and hire a contractor to do it correctly, which most people aren't gonna do. So logically, that's not gonna happen.
And on that, Mr. Applegate, would they have to tear out what's currently there to make it up to code?
Yes, that's why they'd have to be engineered, approved by the city. They'd have to have a real contractor do it, someone who knew how to do it. And it would be logistically pretty problematic for them.
And they couldn't just put it on top of what's already there?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right. Ms. Duncan, did you have anything? Ms. Duncan?
Yes, I don't know if you can hear me. I'm getting it out.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I was just wondering, I don't know if it's been discussed about the grading in the backyards. I know that with these heavy vehicles in the backyard, there's some would like have some flooding going on in the yards of neighbors. And then we have utilities that are in the backyard that's being covered up by these vehicles. So I don't know if they've given any consideration, if we've talked about, I know some, have we given any consideration about those possibilities, about the utilities that are in the backyard?
Yeah, no, and that's a good point because sometimes if you, depending on how your services come from your main lines, if they run through the back, you're definitely gonna run those over. And if you have, you know, a ton or half-ton pickup that, you know, or something that can crush those services, that's not good for you either. And the fact of the matter is, in these neighborhoods, they weren't intended to have things in the backyard like this. And, you know, it just so happens that we have a lot of houses that happen to back along the street that they, people have decided, "Well, I'm just gonna turn this into a secondary access" when technically it's not even allowed. So, you know, the notion that, and I've seen it happen in my old neighborhood and, you know, in a lot of different spots, we'd go walking every evening and see these, these, where people have decided to take out a panel, turn it into a gate and access their backyard, which, you know, all for convenience, that's nice and all, but that's not the way the infrastructure was built. So it's just, there's a lot of bad that can go with those. And I think Ms. Thompson said earlier, "It's gonna cost the city a lot of money." Well, it's costing the taxpayers. When we really come down to it, that's the taxpayers who are the city. So, you know, I think that people need to keep that in consideration as well. So I don't see any other questions.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Estrus. I have a question.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment because there's, in my neighborhood, after Mr. Rick contacted me, I just drove around my neighborhood and several others to see where this was happening. And in my neighborhood, we don't have alleyways and stuff, so it's on the corner lots. And I'm just wondering how many people actually know that this code even exists and that they're supposed to be doing any of this? And are we going to make any effort to do some public education so that they understand? So that they're, you know, I know that that can open a can of worms, but I just, looking around my neighborhood, some of this stuff's been going on for years, and we don't have those straight curbs in our neighborhood. It's the slanted curb, the whole thing is slanted. So I, you know, I'm just concerned that people aren't understanding this. And I'd like to see some education piece of this.
We can do that. Yeah, we can do that.
What I was gonna say, yeah, we could definitely do that, but with that comes then the, all the stuff that comes with it. Anytime we're trying to do things right way and make them, but, you know, you have everyone who disagrees with whatever we say. So I think staff and council just needs to be ready for that, that, you know, so we're gonna educate people on the rights and wrongs of things. And those who don't agree with us are gonna be very vocal in that as well. So just because simply they don't agree with it and they want to use what they think is theirs or, you know, you may care about private property rights when sidewalks are public property and, you know, we're...
And I was wondering what the Planning Commission, when they declined to pass this piece of the changes and ordinances, what was their reasoning? What didn't they like?
The feedback that was received was that they felt that staff was taking away a private property right. However, in this instance, the regulations are already in place for permits.
Okay, and, yeah, and I think that's an education piece, so. Thank you.
I agree. Yeah, and this council member Thompson said it's...
Kristi or is Mr. Rick on by any chance, Mayor?
Yeah, he's on, but I don't, as Ms. Thompson said, you know, it is, you can do it, you just have to go through the permit process. But listening in the way Mr. Applegate describes and the amount of work and money that's gonna go into doing it right, that example where the guy that just decided to pour his own concrete in the middle of the stormwater runoff, that's not right and that's wrong. And the damage that can occur into the street and everything else because I thought I was doing the right thing, just that it doesn't hold water. So I wouldn't do it just because it's not worth it, but some people feel it is. So any other questions or comments on this one? Nothing from public. All right. Just kind of going back and forth to make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay, anybody? What would council like to do with this item? I think we've kind of discussed it, unless there's some very strong feelings another way, we could take a motion. Either way, we want to go. Mr. Geek?
I'm making a motion to approve ordinance number seventeen fifty-two on the first reading.
All right. Oh, and a bunch of lights. Ms. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman with the call.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
I'm voting yes, but we are including the curb cuts, right? Okay, yes.
Councilmember Estrus, how do you vote?
Yes, but strongly encouraging some education piece of this.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll keep moving on. Item nine E, first reading of ordinance number one seven five-three, an ordinance establishing a new chapter, chapter one five point zero five, within Title fifteen Public Safety of the Fountain Municipal Code, establishing a public safety impact fee. Mr. Maxson, is he on? Let me go back to that.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Chief. Yeah, got you, Chief.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. So before you is a impact fee for public safety, both police and fire. As we expand our city and there's a lot of cost with building new facilities, I would foresee that going forward, we're likely gonna combine fire and police together when we build new facilities, which will be a good thing. But these fees will help offset that cost for the rapid development that we experience. And it will also help us purchase large capital items as we go. It kind of proportionately puts it directly on those that are, you know, causing the growth to happen. What we have done is we have looked at other cities as well and have tried to model other practices that have been successful in other cities around us and just try to, you know, make this reasonable, but also a real benefit to the city of Fountain. And with that, do you have any questions?
All right, let me go back to my attendee list here. Every time I hit a button, everything switches around. Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Chief Maxim, thank you for bringing this. And same question I had for planning, were these fees run by the HBA so they know to build that into their costs?
They were, staff had communicated these to the Home Builders Association so that they would have the opportunity to share feedback with us, and staff has not heard anything back.
Okay, and what's the timeline we're giving? Anybody who's building in the city though, might not be a developer, it might be an individual house, right? Time to plan this into their cost. When would these be going into effect?
These would be going into effect.
Did we lose them?
No, I'm still here. I'm actually, um it'll go into effect on the approval of the second reading.
Okay. What what does that add to the cost of an average home? I'm just, I'm not seeing it here really quick.
That's in the next one.
Well, it's in the next, that's what I thought that I knew I had seen it somewhere, so I was looking for it. Okay.
It's been F.
Yes, I see it now. Thank you, Richard. I think that was Richard's voice.
So Councilor Thompson, to answer your question, uh it's eight hundred and twenty dollars for uh fire and eight hundred and twenty dollars for police in a residential impact fee. So uh six sixteen forty.
Under the price of a home?
Under the price of a home. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You didn't hear anything back from the HBA on that, huh?
We have not heard anything back from the HBA and, you know, I would, I would say that, you know, the HBA is experiencing these very things when they build in Colorado Springs and in other communities around us. This this is what's already going on in other places. So, you know, we're not doing anything different than anywhere else.
No, no, I don't have a problem putting the fee on. I just like to make sure we give people enough time to implement any new tax or fee that we put on them into the cost of their business. That's all. Okay.
Todd, your light or your mics on? Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, I just asked, like you said, unmute me, I had been muted. Um but yeah, just to reemphasize Sharon, uh Christie has been uh communicating with the HBA, no comments back. This will not impact anything um that has already been submitted at this point. So any but any residents that are currently building, um it will not affect them. It will only be the new builds that come in after um uh that second reading and especially those new projects that we're looking at on the east side.
Oh, thank you, Todd. Perfect answer. Okay, so they have plenty of time to build it into the cost. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's a question. Uh hold on, there's a question from the public. It says, would this impact fee be put on a home when it is sold in Fountain? I think it's um I'm gonna answer the best I can, but I think it's just on um new builds from this point forward.
That's correct. That's correct, ma'am. Only new builds.
So if it's a house, no, no, that's right. So if I'm moving from my house, I'm, we're not gonna get the person moving in my house isn't gonna get charged. I don't know if that's answering your question.
That's correct. No.
Okay, I'm gonna wait for her to respond and see if that answers her question. Uh any, uh Mr. Geek, go ahead.
Yes, uh I just want to make sure that these are all the new builds. This isn't something that's already been built.
That that is correct. At new construction only.
Okay, and now will there be uh beds for those police officers too?
I can answer that for Chief Heber and no, there will not. There will be small substations, but uh other than that, no relaxation areas for the cops.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, let me see. Anybody else? Okay, James, did you have anything further?
Uh that that is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, um if I don't see any other questions from council or public, what would you like to do with this first item? There's a many items on this subject. Uh Ms. Duncan?
I move to adopt ordinance seventeen fifty-three of the first reading established a new chapter, chapter fifteen dash oh five within title fifteen Public Safety of the Fountain Municipal Code, establishing a public safety fee.
Okay, and Mayor Protem?
A second.
Okay, uh before we uh make a a vote on this, we, there's one other question. What are the total fees collected now? Uh police and fire together will be split into two large. Um it says blogs, I'm assuming that may mean buildings later. No fire station on the east side. So uh there are no fees collected right now for public safety as far as um uh what we're talking about. So this is brand new for the city. Um again, this is, this does occur, these fees do occur in in uh communities around us, Car Springs um definitely charges these things. And so this isn't uh totally um new for the region, it's just new for us. And so um something that we need and probably desperately needed for quite some time. Um but we're gonna, we're gonna implement that now. And as we get bigger and we've talked about the growth, um this will definitely help in in securing those those uh buildings and things that we need in the future, um especially as we keep continue to move out east. Um so with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Huffman to do the vote.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Uh we're just gonna keep moving forward because the rest of these all around the same. Well, let me see. Let me do the next item. Uh item nine F, first reading of ordinance number one seven five four. An ordinance establishing public safety impact fees is authorized by chapter one five point zero five. Public safety impact fees of the Fountain Municipal Code, uh Mr. Maxson. Or Chief Max, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so once again, looking at the significant cost and uh providing police and fire services in our community. Uh and definitely as we as we go out east and we already have a spot identified for Fire Station Four on the east side. Um and so these fees will really help us be able to to grow out east especially, but also the in the entire city. Uh fire and police, um eight hundred and twenty dollars each for residential structure. Uh and that is new construction only, as we have discussed. Uh the commercial industrial impact fee would be for each square foot of development within the building, twenty-six cents of per square foot each for police and fire. Uh and this was provided to the Colorado Springs Home Builders Association at their October meeting. And we have not received um any feedback on the proposal. Um and Councilor Thompson, in the spirit of what you were talking about, about everyone having enough notice about this, um I know that staff will get out there and make sure that everybody has enough notice of this um taking effect so that they'll be able to plan accordingly. And I stand for any question that you may have.
Ms. Estes, does you have a question?
No, hit the wrong button, sorry.
Okay, that's okay, Mr. Geek.
Is there, this is a one-time fee, right?
Uh Councilor Geek, that is correct. Thank you.
So if you own a warehouse um and you are doing improvements inside that warehouse, it's not a new build warehouse, it's improvements into the warehouse. Maybe you're making it from an empty warehouse into a I don't know. Something. Do they have to pay these fees?
Only on the addition of the building.
So only on the, if they added square footage to it, not internally. I'm thinking of like some of the properties we're trying to get in the Old Town area. Uh like the brewery converted, right? Um they they wouldn't have had to pay these fees on any internal improvements they did, only if they did any external.
Correct. If they increased the footprint of the building, they would pay the fee on the increased footprint.
Is outdoor dining considered im-ings in um increasing the size of the building?
I think it would just, it would depend on what that construction was. Um but most, it would, it really wouldn't. So if you're building a patio, it would not affect it.
Okay, that we just have, you know, we're trying so hard to attract a different variety businesses there. I don't want to see us kind of shoot ourselves in the foot and put a fee on it that um you know, would uh be to the detriment of trying to to do that.
Absolutely. And let me uh read something real quick, and that is, um this would be for any construction placement, reconstruction, alteration um of the size of the structure, any increase in the intensity of the use of the land or structure and any change in the use of structure from residential to commercial.
Okay, so using the brewery as an example again, that increased the capacity of the building, that would they have had to pay these fees? Because it was just a garage where a few people worked there before and now it's a restaurant drawing multiple people there.
So to my, uh Councilor Thompson, to my knowledge, the um they did convert it, but they didn't, they may have added on just a tiny little bit to it, but the footprint of the building was still the same. So these impact fees largely would not apply to that. It would only apply if they're adding on a room, it would just apply to that one room and not the entire thing.
Okay, I just, I just like to be careful.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? All right, personally, I think this is that, well, again, well overdue. You know, and I go back to the public when when they um you know, are upset with the the growth and things, but uh you know, this is how um you know, growth pays its way and 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 we ensure things that we need can be taken care of. Um. I'm reading a comment from Ms. Bailey. It's a good point to address, however, under the recently adopted Design Aesthetic Incentive Program specific to Old Town, such fees are eligible for deferral or exemption by administration aiding to support the development in the Old Town District. So the questions you had like, like around the the um uh brewery, um it sounds like they uh would be one of those instances where they could actually apply for um deferral on on the fee. Um if it makes sense and it's gonna add to what we're trying to improve here, uh based on your question. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, thank you. That really helps clarify it.
Okay.
Has anybody ever given any thought to um uh code enforcement in this? Um as our city grows and we bring more businesses and residences here, we will see a need for an increase in code enforcement officers. Uh would that be something we would consider as part of a a fee coming in?
If I could jump in there, Mayor, um just to let everybody know, uh Councilman Thompson, this is not a in any way, shape or form, even when we project and we put these fees to what the projection will be on the home development, those type of things. As the construction prices increase, even this is not going to be able to fund a hundred percent of the stations and things. So we're trying to look at everything holistically and make sure development pays its way. But what we sure don't want to do is start siphoning money off for other things from this. Because we really will need this and everything else we can think outside the box to make sure that we're getting those stations built. So I'd be very, very hesitant as we've looked at the numbers. Just this by itself, we're still gonna have to come up with other things such as um staffing those um and everything else. So at this point, I would hate to put anything else on the plate because even this by itself won't take care of it.
No, I'm, I didn't mean to split up the fee. I meant for few, in the future, is that something that could be entered into part of the discussion?
Are you thinking a separate code enforcement type fee?
I I'm just opening the door for the discussion.
Uh we can research that. I have never heard of that, but we'll, we'll take a look at what they're doing uh around the region and around the state and the nation. Um so we can research that for you.
Uh let me jump in here real quick. The the, these impact fees actually by statute can all, they're they're for capital needs. So they're not for personnel needs.
There you go.
Yeah, so when we're looking, we're we're doing these for public safety, it's for the capital needs of public safety, whether we're doing it for streets, it's for the capital, but you can't do these impact fees for personnel.
Okay.
All right, I have a couple other uh council members with questions. Uh Mr. Applegate?
No, I was gonna make a motion a while ago.
Oh, sorry.
Same thing.
Okay. All right, Ms. Thompson, do you have other questions?
I can think of some more, but I will refrain.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see anymore on public, so uh Mr. Applegate?
I move to approve ordinance seventeen fifty-four on first reading.
All right, Ms. Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Um Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All righty.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Um here we go, item number nine G. Resolution two zero dash zero eight eight, a resolution implementing a temporary interim road impact fee in the city of Fountain. So this temporary interim isn't at a uh not a double negative, but it's kind of like saying a cheesy quesadilla. Um Mr. Adams, go ahead.
That's good there. I wish I could take uh credit for that, but I can't. So along the same vein, we've made a commitment to the community uh to the council and everyone else. So we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that any new development pays its way. And as the last uh public safety portion we just talked about, this falls under that same vein. So before I get into the specifics of this, I want to make sure everyone knows this does not impact any current residents. This does not impact any uh resale of homes or that. This is just for new uh development that comes into the city. Um and what this is, is we have been talking to the developers, they're all very aware that this is uh uh coming. We've talked to the HBA for for several years about this, as a matter of fact. And the reason is, is it was mentioned before, this is something that's done um around the region and specifically in El Paso County that border us. So this fee you can see will match what El Paso County does uh with their transportation fee. Um and the reason we are calling it a temporary interim, Mayor, um is because we are um uh getting to the conclusion of our master transportation plan update. But is that not will, as that study will not be concluded. Um possibly by the time some of these other projects are submitted. We want to make sure that this is in place um so that anything that is approved in the future has this transportation fee uh uh responsibility with that. So as you can see on that second paragraph, while our study is being conducted, uh the fee will be implemented and then we will come back to you to make this permanent. Once we have that master transportation plan and it shows why we need this fee. So this fee for all areas of development mirror the fees implemented by El Paso County. And that is based upon the El Paso County Major Transportation Corridors Plan Road Impact Fee. So to break this down and what this is, is this fee is intended not to solve our current problems. So with the different neighborhoods and the neighborhood problems we've talked about, like Heritage and Cross Creek, those we already know are going to be in the millions to have to go in and rebuild those neighborhood roads. This fee, as it comes in, as homes are completed in any future and new development is intended so that we have monies to maintain and help uh keep the maintenance up on those roads. If we do need to go in and fix those roads, it's intended to funnel back into that or to also help the city with any large capital uh projects we need to do because of those developments. But I want to make sure everyone understands that this will not fix the problems that we currently have. We're gonna need to find other solutions. But again, we're looking at these things holistically and we need to have solutions, multiple solutions coming in from multiple areas so that we can start impacting um uh and and improve our transportation needs. So with this fee in place, um it will be thirty-eight hundred dollars per lot. And then there is also a matrix that pertains to commercial, but we will discuss that once we uh bring that back and we have a master transportation plan to justify that commercial piece. We just want to make sure the residential is in in place, so this interim fee will be We just want to make sure the residential is in in place, so this interim fee will be. Per residential lot that is built after the second reading and it is implemented. So with that, I open it up to any questions.
One mute, okay. Let me look at my. Attendees here, let's see. I am not seeing any. Questions on this one. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, just one very quick question for clarification. Todd, did you say these the? The fees that are listed in the paperwork now are. Either duplicative of or in line with what the county's fees are?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought that's what I heard and just wanted to be doubly sure. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Duncan.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay. All right, Ms. Duncan, go ahead.
I move to approve resolution number two zero dash zero eight eight.
And Mayor Pro Tem, your mic still on?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to item nine H, resolution two zero dash zero eight nine. A resolution establishing licensing fees, impoundment fees, redemption fees. And other fees pertaining to the regulation of animals. Mr. Flores.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. You'll recall back on, I'm sorry, attendance also tonight, we have. The Humane Society interim CEO Leslie Yoder and also the Animal Law Enforcement Director Jamie Norris, in case there are any questions for them. Everybody, please recall on October thirteenth council meeting, we discussed. The Humane Society of the Pike Peak Region recommended an increase in the Fountain Animal Licensing and Registration Fees to be effective January first of twenty twenty-one. This increase would realign the current fees in the city of Fountain. With the fee increases also adopted by other local jurisdictions that are being provided animal control services by the HSPPR, the Humane Society. Your in your attachment, you'll see under the resolution two zero zero eight nine. The current fees and then the new fees that are proposed. And then also a section for fees for citizens over sixty-five years of age. Are there any questions?
Let me look. Right. Okay, I see no questions. Thank you, Juan. What would counsel like to do with this item? Ms. Thompson.
Move to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, and right at the last minute there, right in the middle of the voting. Mr. Clements asked a question, or maybe he's just making a statement. He thinks the amount of these fees for the safety and temporary access should be switched. Thirty eight hundred for safety and six sixteen hundred for access. I think the way that that they work the fees. Is kind of a kind of a set. I don't even know how to say it right. Juan, can you answer that? Why the fees are the way they chosen for for each of those areas?
Yes, Mayor, I will try. I have actually, if Leslie Yoder or Jamie Norris are on online, are they available?
They're on, but they don't, they can't use their mics.
Okay, could you rephrase that question again, then, please?
Yeah, I'll just read it the way it is. I think the amount of these fees for safety and temporary access should be switched. He has thirty eight hundred for safety and sixteen hundred for access fees. We already voted on this. I don't know, we could change it now anyway, but if you want to just give an explanation.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. I think I think he's actually referring to the impact fees from the items. And and if I could just briefly interject, this will be super quick. Those those figures aren't figures that we can actually pull out of a hat. It actually has to be based on a study. That has a has a connection to our actual cost. So that's what Todd was talking about when he was talking about the a study that has to be done for the roads.
Okay.
That'll help us determine what that is.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
Thank you. I was very confused myself with those.
Okay, yeah, I'm like, wait a minute, and it just popped up like right now is weird. Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Item nine I. Resolution two zero dash zero nine zero, a resolution amending the twenty twenty-one. And twenty twenty-two contract between the City of Fountain. And the Humane Society, so I will give it back of the, sorry, and the Humane Society of the Pike Peak Region. I'm going to give it back to Mr. Flores.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a request to amend the contract that was approved at the last October thirteenth council meeting. The changes now is that the increase in the in the fees that were just approved and passed. Will decrease those amounts, and so. This will provide an animal control service contract city fountain. Which includes was unlimited to animal law enforcement and shelter for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And the amended fees now have been reduced by approximately twenty four thousand eight hundred dollars. And that's going to be the difference now with our new contract for twenty twenty-one and then a reduced contract in twenty twenty-two as well. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Juan on this item? Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion with a couple weeks ago about this, so. I am not seeing any questions from public or. Ms. Duncan, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve resolution two zero dash zero nine zero. Approving the amended contract for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Animal Control Services between the Humane Society of the Pike Peak Region and the City of Fountain.
All right, Mr. Applegate, did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Good Lord, I'm it's it's late. We have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thompson, how do you vote?
S.
Member Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Item. Nine J, resolution number two zero dash zero nine one. A resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY twenty twenty budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, it's muffled, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'll try and close to the microphone here. Mayor, I know that the last meeting we brought up a. supplemental and we were hoping it was going to be the last one, but this is actually good news. Because particularly for the general fund, we have an opportunity for some grants. And we received additional revenue in the water fund, for example. That needs to be spent this year. That was something we couldn't predict. Back on November nineteenth of twenty nineteen, when we first approved the the budget. So. We've got money that has been received by Challenger Homes for road improvements. We have proceeds from the sale of the H two O Ranch for water fund improvements. And. Due to COVID and. You know, the fact that now some people might be might near the end of the year, might be seeing their doctor. And that that goes into what they call IBNR or incurred, but. Not received, which is the the bill for those medical costs. We wanted to cover ourselves because if you know Colorado State regulations does not allow us to spend any money that has not. Been appropriated by you. So so I'll go through the individual items. And it'll make a little bit more sense. If we could skip to the next slide. In the general fund. We have the opportunity to get a CDBG grant for Country Club Heights. So we want to use that grant to take care of the curb gutter and sidewalks. And and pay CMS, which is the company that's doing that. We received four hundred and fifty thousand from Challenger Homes. So we we want to. Work a little bit more on on some of the road improvements in that area. We also have a reimbursable grant on the Southmore ADA Project. So we need to pay concrete experts who are doing the ADA project at the Southmore. Last but not least. We have an opportunity to go for a grant if we have an engineer do a study on the. Ohio and Maine intersection. And so we are going to cover that without additional appropriation, but I wanted to make you aware of it. Because we're we're appropriating money from various operating accounts. And transferring some money from the utility funds that that would fit. The economic development person, for example, that position that was never filled during the year. So we're going to use those costs. To cover that study without additional appropriation. So the total expenditures we're asking you to prove in the general fund, seven hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and two dollars. But it'll have. No fund balance impact, no increase or decrease. We could go to the next slide, please. So here we have the water fund that received four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. From the sale of the real estate in Custer County involved H two O Ranch, which gave us. Some water rights that that we badly needed. We also have an environmental services agreement. So we've got sixty thousand coming in for that. And and there's a number of transfers that water would like to do to kind of take care of some. System improvements for well number four, one fire hydrants, et cetera. So with those various transfers to cover a number of costs and the system improvements. We have total expenditures of four hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred, and again, no impact to the fund balance. Finally, the insurance fund. We are close to budget, but if we run over budget, if if a lot of people end up. Going to see their doctor or have any issues the next few months. That get accrued back at at year end by the orders. And we don't have quite the amount of money that's been appropriated. Then it comes up as a as a note in the audit. So we're trying to make sure that all funds are fully funded. So. In this case, with the insurance fund. You know, the good chance we're not going to be spending all of this five hundred thousand, or hope hoping very little. But just in case, we want to make sure that we've got that budget. Covered and appropriated in accordance with Colorado regulations. And back on the water fund. In speaking with Dan Blankenship earlier this week. He did not believe that we would need all of that six hundred and seventy thousand. For the system improvements, which means that a good amount of of money. At least six hundred, excuse me, at least sixty thousand dollars would be going it back into the fund balance. So with that, I would like to ask for your approval to appropriate this. Resolution twenty dash oh nine one amending the fiscal year twenty twenty budgeted funds.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'm going to look for questions or comments on this item. Okay, I am seeing none. What would counsel like to do with this item? Mr. Geek.
I move to approve resolution number twenty dash zero nine one on the first reading.
All right, and Ms. Duncan.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence, comments, and ex officia reports. I made a list of staff that I see that are on. If I miss you. Just put your hand up at the end. I'll try to make sure I get to you. Scott, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple quick items. One I wanted to mention is that we're still. At tier three with our COVID response. We received a letter from Governor Polis today, and he's. Directed that for state employees who are in orange or red counties. That they are directed to work from home now to try to slow down the increase in the COVID cases. El Paso County, as Councilmember Thompson mentioned earlier, we're in a yellow stage right now, so that doesn't necessarily impact us right now. But theoretically, if he were to bump it up to bump up El Paso County over the, and by the way, that's for the month of November. But if he's a bump us to a orange or red, then. Definitely the state employees would be directed to stay home in El Paso County, but he's also asking that. Local governments would do the same thing, again, just for the month of November. That's not where we're at yet. If that happens, then I'll I'll definitely be conferring with the mayor to figure out what direction we want to go. But I just wanted to mention that. Because it is, it's something that's been mentioned earlier today that's impacting. Just the the state and our region pretty heavily. Secondly, just a reminder that we have the Christmas tree lighting. That is the evening of the twentieth at six o'clock. That will actually normally it's at the mayor's park. We're going to be doing it this year in the courtyard out in front of City Hall. And I think we have a kind of a fun new tradition. We're going to be lighting up a live tree. And having that live tree up for the season and then planting it after the season's over and trying to. Start a new tradition where we plant our live Christmas trees around. Our parks or open space after the holiday season. So we thought this would be a a fun year to start something new like that. So that's all I have for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Evans.
Mayor, I appreciate the the good words earlier and and thank you to everybody else. It's it's pretty easy when you get behind such a. Such a righteous project as that, and. I think all of us down here kind of enjoy if anybody in Colorado Springs questions, whether we can get something done or not in a timely fashion. We like to show them how we do it in Fountain. So sure appreciate that. Glad to see Link Road is open. And that's all I've got tonight.
Yeah, I've heard some great comments about Link Road finally being open, and. I missed the opening by like three hours. I still had to go around the the dirt roads, but I'm glad it's open and everyone can use it. So thanks for all that work on everybody's part. Troy, anything tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Lewis, anything further?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we will have our first draft. Of the digitized budget book to you later this week. We look forward to the first reading next week with you in that meeting and. Wrapping up this. Twenty-one, twenty-two budget session and season. and wrapping up this twenty-one, twenty-two budget session and season. As you all know, it's, it's been a rough year to hope. We were almost there.
Okay, yeah, it's been, it's been a weird year and to throw all that stuff in at the, at this time, too, it's been, it's been hard. So thank you for plugging through with that again to council members. I think right now we've only had one, it's been making appointments, but if you do want to get any clarity or anything like that as far as budget and, and requests that have been made and things like that, please get with those department heads within the next few days, as our next meeting is next week. Let's see, Mr. Trilch.
Good evening, mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Right. Well, good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to report out tonight on kind of what we're doing from a public communication standpoint. There is a lot going on toward the end of the year here, and I want to just kind of go through a list of the different communication efforts that we have there and information that we're trying to share and working to share with the public right now. We've got COVID nineteen updates and information. We've got road projects that are being completed, Veterans Day honors and recognition, new parks equipment at Fountain Mesa Park we're sharing, the Old Town Placemaking Survey, the EPA Brownfield Initiative, the Christmas Tree Lighting Event, the Strategic Plan Video and Updates, the city budget process, Fountain Water Quality Information, Blue Santa Toy Drives, Fountain Youth Council, and several others that I haven't mentioned here. So just wanted to kind of share with council, we got a lot of information and a lot of activity in the city that we are sharing with the community. Happy to answer any questions about any of those, but just wanted to just kind of share that with everybody. That's all I have.
I did, I did have a question for you. So in the past few years, I know my family and some of the other staff and I think council members as well, as well, have taken part in the NORAD Track Santa. What's that going to look like this year? Are they still going to do that? Is it going to be on a smaller scale? Because I, they used to shove everybody in a bunch of rooms and we were just tightly packed, so I know they can't do that. Has there been any kind of communication on that?
There has been, mayor, a little bit. It is not going to be like it's been in previous years. I know they're working hard on trying to come up with a plan where they can still do it in the COVID environment. I've got my round of kind of military affairs meetings next week and expecting some more updates on that. And I'll be sure to pass it along to you and the rest of council and staff for how folks can participate this year.
Yeah, I know. Amongst everything else coming, going on, we got Christmas coming, so I know that's, that's a, a, a big topic for everybody as well. So thank you for checking on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chief Maxon, are you still online?
I am still on. I just want to say thank you, everybody, for your hard work on the impact fees. Our COVID test site that we had at Fire Station One last week and the week before, I estimate we tested a little over sixteen hundred local area residents there, so the need is great. That site has now moved up to where the Beckett Event Center was, and that's it. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Let me see. I think that's it for staff. Ms. Huffman.
Thank you, mayor. And as councilmember Estes spoke about and John Trilch, we do have that exciting ribbon cutting coming this Thursday at one o'clock. Super excited to open up this new park equipment, Fountain Mesa Park. And as you noted, it does say here on our council agenda online that our next meeting is the seventeenth. My hard copy actually said the twenty-fourth, so I just want to make sure that all public and council knows that we have a council meeting next week, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was going to mention that, too, that I know on the paper sheet it says the, the twenty-fourth. But because of Thanksgiving week, we, we traditionally move that up, and the same with December's meeting as well. So if you're planning to head that far with council meetings, for some reason, if that's what you do, just realize that's happening as well. And when I, this is two weeks in a row, or two times in a row, I've said, okay, that's staff, and then I say, Ms. Huffman. Everybody needs to realize that Ms. Huffman runs the show, so I don't consider her staff. She's more of the, the overlord and purveyor of everything that goes on in the city. So I just, that's why she gets that distinction of not being part of the staff. So with that, I will go through council quickly. Ms. Duncan?
I don't have anything else, mayor.
Okay, Mr. Geek?
I just would like to remind everybody about the nice new road that we got down there at CNS and Lincoln. It's really nice. Really appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, just like to remind everybody in the southeast part of town, we do now have a Dollar General at Jimmy Camp in Lincoln. It's open now.
Oh, wow. Okay. Ms. Estes?
Just happy Veterans Day to everybody that served us, and we'll see you next week.
Okay, Ms. Mayor Protem?
I just want to say many thanks to Councilmember Duncan for getting the youth council revived. And hopefully we'll get some, some really good traction with that this time and have it turn into a perpetual situation for us. Given that the Dollar General is literally right outside my backyard, I'm, I'm excited to be able to just go around the corner and get any last minute necessities or whatever the case is. And even during the meeting, I got a couple more people that wanted to pass along some gratitude for all the construction work on Link Road and how smooth and extremely drivable that is. And one guy said he apologizes for going sixty without realizing it, and he's happy that there were no police down there when he did that.
Okay. Thanks.
It was not me, not me.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, that, I can't see how beautiful a road that is. I, I went out to CNS and drove it from there, down Lincoln, around and, and out to Ventana and up Old Pablo Road, and it's just fantastic progress for our city. So thank you to all the staff and the overtime and Todd for thinking outside the box on that. And it's, it's a great improvement, and it's where we need to be going. And again, happy Veterans Day. Echo what Councilmember Estes said. Remember, we will have a program released on our website tomorrow. There's no formal program at the wall due to COVID. And just to kind of reiterate on what Scott said about COVID at the meeting, CDPE said they expect twenty counties by the end of the week to be orange counties. If you look at the map now, there's like sixteen or seventeen, and they are thinking of shortening the timeframe to taking back the shoot, I lost the word again. Man, I'm tired. The, the variances that you get, you know, within the county. So right now you have like a two week or one week period to fix it and not lose your variance, and they're thinking of shortening that if this thing keeps going in the same route it is. So they just really were stressing people two to three weeks. You know, maybe give up a few activities, stay home a little bit more, and get this under control.
Okay, and then I just wanted to address the, first, let me, it's going to lead into what I need to talk to you about. So Ms. Bailey, who is on the other version of Kimberly Bailey, our Economic Development Coordinator, she's on the other version of our attendee list, so her mic isn't working. But she did want me to mention that Woodman Hall property upgrade construction is slated to begin near the end of the month with the six-week completion, and that's the, this added stairwell, if I'm not mistaken, and Gray can help me on this as well. So just some exterior things that they've been working on to get that moving. As you all know, Center Yoga has been operating upstairs, and she's really designed that, that little space of hers really nicely. And you can go up and do yoga with her. I know she's doing some online classes as well, but it looks like she's been pretty busy and kind of that, one of those little anchors that we needed just to get that thing going. So really excited about that. The EPA Brownfield Site nomination is open for public input as well. So you can get onto that website, and if you need help finding that, you can contact Ms. Bailey for that as well. And then the other thing around the mics and the issues we were having tonight about public and not being able to speak, apparently there is a little toggle switch that you hit when you start this, or you create the link for the meeting, and for some reason, that wasn't switched on this time, and it normally is, from what I'm understanding. And so it was just a misstep on our part, so we do apologize. But we know that now, and we know that's one of those double checks that we need to do in, in the next, as for as long as we have to keep doing it. So again, with the great apologies, we'll, we'll make sure that's worked out. And sorry we couldn't get that working tonight to all the students and, and everybody who wanted to speak tonight and just couldn't. So we will have that fixed for next week. And again, veterans, without you, we would not be able to do what we're doing today. So just thank you for everything that you've done or are doing in, in, you know, giving us the life that we have and, and moving us forward as, as a country. I do want to send out a special congratulations to Commissioner Gonzalez for his reelection, the county commissioner. Granted, these are unofficial results, but I think we're, we're good on these. And to our new representative, State Representative, Ms. Mary Bradfield. Very excited to have her on board and working with us. And of course, Congressman Lambort. I know there's a lot of, you know, on either side with him, but I know for the City of Fountain, he has done a lot to help us, especially with our water issues and things like that. So just want to wish congratulations on, on where we are with those elections. I know there's a lot of stuff going on with all that, but I think in those three elections, we are doing okay. So with that, a reminder, our next meeting is next week, the seventeenth. I think we have cleared the agenda to only work on our budget, our first reading of that budget. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all next week. Please stay warm, and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.